Okay. Hey, good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the Planning Committee meeting, Public Planning Committee Meeting to order. Are there any disclosure of conflict of interest? Seeing none, except the agenda. I have a motion and move by Council Noble, second by Deputy Mayor Williams, that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry accepts the public meeting agenda of Monday, June 8, 2020. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Okay, no minutes to ratify housekeeping bylaws, a housekeeping zoning bylaw for cannabis-related development. Welcome, Cassia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will share my screen now. It says host disabled participants screen sharing. Sarah, can you address this? It says host disabled participants screen sharing. Haven't seen this before, Sarah. Sarah?
Is it working now, Kasia?
Okay, let me try again. Okay, it's working now. Thank you, Sarah. All right. Okay, so you should be seeing my screen now. Is that, can you see?
Yeah.
My screen? Perfect, okay. All right, so. Okay, so the first item is the housekeeping zoning bylaw for cannabis-related development. I will go through the federal provincial framework as it applies to retail cannabis. And then I will speak about cannabis-related development, production facilities and processing facilities. So the first item, the federal government passed Bill C45, the Cannabis Act, on October 17, 2018. And the provincial government passed the Cannabis License Act and Regulation 46818 on November 16, 2018. And these two pieces of legislation guide recreational and production of cannabis facilities. So yeah, together they guide recreational cannabis store system that came into effect on April 1, 2019. And retail recreational cannabis store system is overseen by the Alcohol Gaming Commission of Ontario AGCO. This is very important. So anytime anyone wants to sell recreational cannabis, they need to go through AGCO for the licensing system. There's three types of permits they need to get before speaking to any municipality about a specific location. So they are just a province first. For the regional local framework, the SDG County's official plan and the zoning bylaw, so the SDG County's plan actually doesn't have specific policy when it comes to cannabis. However, it has a lot of policy for commercial industrial land uses which are sufficient to speak to cannabis-related development, again, production and processing. And our township zoning bylaw does not specifically address cannabis or cannabis-related development. So the proposed housekeeping bylaw is going to discuss the proposed amendments to make it possible for production and processing facilities to be located in certain zones only. So I will do an overview of retail cannabis sale. Again, this is completely regulated via provincial legislation, as I mentioned before. So most municipalities actually don't have specific zones for retail cannabis. Instead, they use their retail store definition or retail sale definition within their existing zoning bylaws to permit the sale of cannabis anywhere where a retail store is permitted. So as I mentioned, AGCO has the responsibility for regulating Ontario's cannabis retail stores under the two pieces of legislation from the province. And they are focusing on safe, responsible level sale of cannabis consistent with legislation enacted by the provincial government to ensure that retail sale of cannabis in Ontario is carried without, with honesty, integrity, and in public interest as set out in the Cannabis License Act. So a background piece of information, the Township of North Glengarry opted in for retail cannabis in January 2019. So this staff report was presented by the CEO in January 2019 and council did adopt. The same goes for the rest of the townships in SDG. They opted in as well as City of Ottawa and Township of Russell. In our region, there is no municipalities that opted out from cannabis retail sale. Again, moving forward, so cannabis retail sale as pertains to our township. So what is proposed is that cannabis sale would be addressed through the retail store definition. And it's in front of you, retail store is a building or a part of a building in which goods, wares, merchandise, substances, or articles are stored and offered for sale to the general public and may include the storage of such goods, wares, merchandise, substances, or articles, but does not include any establishment otherwise defined or classified in this bylaw. So in our zoning bylaw, retail store use is permitted only within three zones, general commercial, village core area, and tourist commercial. So the sale of recreational cannabis would effectively be permitted only in these three zones where a retail store is permitted. And if someone wanted to have retail sale cannabis use anywhere else, they would be required as only by law amendment. So the staff report I provided to you speaks actually more specifically to cannabis production and processing facilities. The background I just gave you is to to give an overview of how retail licensing works. So the proposed amendments in the housekeeping bylaw pertain to cannabis and production and processing facilities. I've looked at environmental land use planning guidelines published by the Ministry of the Environment Conservation Parks, MCP, to see how it works. These guidelines pertain to industrial uses and other contentious land uses and provide minimal impacts to make sure there is a minimal impact on the surrounding environment and land uses. So in front of you is just an image of a cannabis production facility and on top is an air treatment system. That's important to point out because there can be two types of production facilities with air treatment and without an air treatment system. So I looked at several townships, including Township of King and Municipality of Tweed, and to see what kind of existing zoning bylaw provisions they have. So basically municipalities that have permitted the production and processing of cannabis permitted always in the industrial zone and then sometimes in agricultural and rural zones. So it really depends, but there's a consensus that cannabis production and processing is, should be permitted in the industrial zone since there is odors and some nuisance concerns. About half the townships or municipalities I looked at did also permit it in the ag zones or rural zones. On the local context. So then moving forward, this is an excerpt straight from the report. And these are actually the precise amendments proposed to the zoning bylaw. So new definition for air treatment control to ensure what constitutes appropriate air treatment to prevent misinterpretation. And new definition for cannabis and cannabis production and processing. This ensures production processing is not interpreted under another use definition and excluded from certain other definitions. A new definition for sensitive land use provides a clear reference to those uses considered sensitive, such as dwellings, residential zones, and schools. Allow an accessory building to be located within a required frontier of the main building if it is used for security purposes for a cannabis production facility. So there are substantial security requirements established by the provincial and federal governments for production facilities. It is appropriate to allow for a guardhouse or security shelter at the entrance to a site. And then the next one is for parking provisions for cannabis production and processing facility at a rate of one space for 100 meters. And on our standards is on the right side of the chart, the current standards for industrial establishments. And next two points are very important. So when establishing many minimum separation distances for cannabis production processing with air treatment systems, the following setbacks must be applied, 70 meters from any residential or institutional zones. So institutional can be healthcare, clinics, hospitals, schools, daycares, and so on. And then 150 meters from any sensitive land use except an accessory dwelling. So those two elements are taken from the, from the Ontario License Act for cannabis. And then moving forward, establishing minimum separation distances for cannabis production and processing without air treatment as follows. So because there is no air treatment system, the setback is increased from 150 to 300, since odor nuisance would be expected to be larger. And then finally, the three zones you see, general industrial, rural industrial, and general ag is where cannabis production and processing is proposed to be permitted. So as I mentioned before, some municipalities did permit it in the ag zones and others didn't. And it's up to the planning committee to comment on this. And finally, it is the recommendation of the planning department that the housekeeping zoning bylaw for cannabis-related development be forwarded to Council of Township of North Glengarry for further consideration approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Cassia. So this is the public portion of the meeting. So we will just move on to the, since we aren't able to ask the public to speak on to this, we'll just move on to the next part of it, removing of holding housekeeping zoning bylaw amendment.
Okay, we will move forward, okay. So I'll share my screen again. All right. So removal of holding housekeeping zoning bylaw amendment. First, a quick overview of the framework, the provincial policy statement, why holding provision exists in the first place. So the PPS provides guidance on municipal sewage services and municipal water services are the preferred form of servicing for settlement areas. And this zoning amendment pertains to a settlement area of Maxwell. In the same way, the Stormont Dandels and Glengarry County's official plan provides guidance that full water and sewage disposal services are the preferred option for urban servicing, settlement development. So this is why a holding is often put in place in urban settlement areas where there is no sanitary or water or both to make sure that the proposed development is the appropriate site-specific servicing well or septic system is appropriate for that piece of land. So again, holding provisions are applied to lands to delay development until local municipal servicing such as roads, water, sanitary servicing are in place. A holding provision was applied to a number of lots in Maxwell within the current zoning bylaw. So this was at least 20 years ago, if not more. I don't have the historical data to have the exact date in order to comply with the SDG official plan and the provincial policy statement. In the case of Maxwell, municipal water servicing became available in certain areas, prompting an update to the township zoning bylaw to remove the holding provision from several lots where it's no longer necessary. So myself and Jacob have flagged 19 lots, zoned residential first density holding R1H, that are part of the removal of holding housekeeping bylaw in Maxwell. Very important to note, some lots are vacant while others are actually developed. So they have homes on them and they had already existing private servicing. So the ones that are already developed with a home, they can be redeveloped without the necessity of removing the holding because it's going to be removed with this bylaw. So the removal of holding effectively permits the lands to be developed or redeveloped for residential uses listed within the R1 zone without additional planning permissions. They go straight to the building department. They comply with the proposed use in the R1 zone. And once the holding is removed, the lots will be ready for development or redevelopments. So the map you've seen in the staff report. So the 19 lots are either, where the holding will be removed, are either in yellow or red. So the lots that are yellow are actually already developed. For this one, for example, is largely only has a single detached dwelling here. The rest of them have also dwellings or some other use. The three lot that are red are actually vacant, very important to note. So if someone wanted to redevelop the lot, they would, they wouldn't need to remove the holding, they wouldn't need a zoning bylaw amendment for that purpose. One thing to note here, you will see this large lot of 42 acres, R1H. Myself and Jacob decided not to remove the holding because the lot is very large and it will have to go through a plan of subdivision due to its size. And at that time, the holding will be removed also. So that is wise there. And it also doesn't have a direct access to County Road 22, another thing to point out. And this is just a list you have in your staff report as well. So the 19 properties that are affected by the proposed housekeeping bylaw. So the lots highlighted in white and green are already developed and three light red ones are the vacant lots. So 39 and 41 mechanics trees and 57 mechanic trees. So it is the recommendation of the planning department that the removal of holding housekeeping zoning bylaw be forwarded to the Council of the Township of North Glengarry for further consideration approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Cassia. And again, we aren't able to ask the public to speak on to this. So that'll conclude our public meeting of planning. I have a motion moved by Council.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor? I was just wondering, we didn't get any requests from the public at all, Kasia?
So I got probably six or seven phone calls and emails about just clarifying the Maxwell housekeeping zoning bylaw. And for the cannabis, I had one gentleman interested about where he could place retail, but no specific comments. And I have probably three or four people who are also interested in cannabis sale or production from the past in the last year that have contacted me.
Thank you.
I have a motion moved by Council Wensink, second by Councilman Manley, that there be no further business to discuss. The meeting was adjourned at 6:49 PM. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Moving on to the planning meeting. Is there any disclosure of conflict of interest? Seeing none. I have a motion moved by Council Noble, second by Deputy Mayor Williams, that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry accepts the Planning Committee meeting agenda of Monday, June 8, 2020. Any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you. Motion is carried. Okay, moving on to the Planning Committee recommended approval of the housekeeping, sorry, the housekeeping zoning bylaw for cannabis-related development and that bylaw be forwarded to the Council of Township of North Glengarry for further consideration and approval. So we just heard that report. Are there any questions from the members of council? Council Noble?
Kasia, so I have two questions. The first one's, nope, the first one you answered already. You will consider it an egg. So my question to you, that Maxwell map would be perfect, and I should have asked you for something like that for Alexandria. But I'm just wondering if you can give a really small version of where these sites are. So I can obviously figure out Village Core Area where that would be. But tourist commercial, where might that be in Alexandria, the general commercial? And then how far out is like the rural industrial and the general ag?
So general ag is all over. There is a lot of agricultural lands, as you know. So it would be, I'm not sure, maybe 20, 25% of our land area in North Glengarry. Tourist Commercial, I believe I've seen it in some hamlets. I don't think it's located in Alexandria. And rural industrial, that's going to be also in hamlets. So say Donevegan, and if there is an industrial use, it could be at the, just outside of the settlement area, but near, near to the core of the hamlets, for example.
Okay. Are there any further questions? Council Manley?
Yeah, just, Kasia, just wondering, you'd said that some municipalities were not including ag on there. Do you have a breakdown of what that looks like? Is it 50% of municipalities or like how many municipalities are not including ag in this?
I would say it's more about 60% are not including ag and 40 are, does the, does the breakdown?
60 are not?
Or not, yeah.
Having ag?
Yes, that's right, as a permitted zone.
I'm kind of curious. I'm kind of curious as to why, why more than half of them would not want to, to do that? Do you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, it's because the, there's a residential use permitted in the ag zone. So the concern from the residents and the conflicting uses, like odors, nuisance. So that might be it.
Okay.
Hey, Council Williams, Deputy Mayor Williams?
I have a couple of questions. I'm just wondering pertaining to Councilman Manley's question, whether or not some of these other municipalities are less, they don't have as much agricultural land as we do. That's, that's, maybe, maybe that's an explanation as well. I mean, we're very agricultural compared to some other municipalities for sure. But I'm just speculating when I say that. My questions pertain to the minimum setbacks. There is a, the, the minimum setback, it says here, for, or separation distances with air treatment is 70 meters from any residential or institutional zones. Now, residential, I don't understand how come there's the 70 meter for residential and institutional and then 150 meter from any quote unquote sensitive land use? Because it seems to me that residential qualifies as a sensitive land use. So I'm not sure why one is 70 meters and one is 150, and institutional such as schools, I would think, I would think you would, you would want 150 meter set separation distance from, from all of those uses.
I agree. So I could clarify the language in that, but effectively there is two options to consider, 70 and 150 meters, depending on how many sensitive uses are located within the range of the proposed site.
Well, okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. May I continue?
Yeah, go ahead.
So I would definitely advocate for the 150 meter distance for, for all aspects. That's my opinion. My, my other question is, is are we in a, are we in a position to, to basically only allow processing facilities with air treatment? In other words, we will not approve processing facilities without air treatment. Are we in a position to be able to do that?
Yes, definitely. So this zoning bylaw amendment could be modified to effectively remove the cannabis production without air treatment and provide a safe mineral language that cannabis facility without air, air treatment will not be permitted. So yes, that's an option.
Okay, thank you. I don't know what the rest of council thinks, but I propose both of those changes.
Anybody else on council? I mean, I'd prefer to see it come back to us then.
Yeah, well, sure.
With a report on why we're doing it. And then we can make an informed decision then. Just, Council Noble, go ahead.
I'm just curious. I, I wouldn't be that excited about having it in the rural and agriculture areas either, keeping it more in a store environment. I didn't know how everybody else felt about that. And yeah, I would be curious what the other places decided. If they are more residential than, than ag, maybe it wasn't a problem for them to, to allow it.
So I guess then, you know, coming back with a report on why other people have declined the use, just so that we're, you know, we're aware of what's going on with, you know, 60% is pretty high. So let's, let's take a look at that and why. Okay. Okay, seeing none. So we are going to defer this. All those in favor of deferral? Motion is carried. Okay, moving on to the next agenda item, it is I have a motion moved by Councilman Manley, second by Councilor Wensink, that the Planning Committee recommend approval of the removal of the whole holding housekeeping zoning bylaw and that the bylaw be forwarded to the Council of the Township of North Glengarry for further consideration and approval. So just again, we just had that report in the public planning meeting. So does members of council have any questions on this? Council Manley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, my main question is just about that, that lot, that large, whatever it was, how many acres it was, just north of the Maxwell Manor. And why, why we're not, not removing the hold off that whole piece of property? I'm unclear about that. Because in my mind, that's where we're going to, that's where we're going to have some development possibly. And so I don't see why we wouldn't remove the hold on that right now. That's, that's the future of Maxwell right there in my mind. So I think we should be removing the hold on that then.
I think Council Manley, she did say that, that once the, I mean, we can remove it now, I guess. Maybe she has some explanation, but anything comes forward on that with a, with a site development plan that we are, it's going to be removed. But you're right, like if we're going to be doing that, then why keep it on?
So the holding on that property would not slow it down because it is so large, it will have to go through plan of subdivision and plan of subdivision takes a long time, 12 months or longer. So removing, removal holding will be part of the application. So that's the reason we decided to keep it because it will go through wide planning approvals anyways. That's the reason.
So there would be no, there would be no delay, extra delay because, because of the, the holding on that?
No, there wouldn't, no.
Okay.
Okay, well, as long as we can guarantee that there's no, there's no, would be no additional, I mean, we don't want to hold stuff up for sure. I mean, it's.
I understand, I understand. The language seems complicated.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of questions again. I'm just wondering what, what triggered this process, Kasia?
So the Maxwell water being available and it's a housekeeping item. So basically cleaning up the bylaw. So we don't want redundant items or misleading items in the zoning bylaw. We want it to be up to date with the current reality. That is what triggered it.
Okay. It's just a little bit of confusion out there just because the vast majority of those lots are already developed. Some of them are double lots and probably could be severed. But you know, that's a process in and of itself. So they're not, some of, some of the lots along there are probably readily developable anyway. My, but I, it does, it does bring also the question of the need to actually look at the vacant lots in Maxwell more closely in preparation for identifying what is developable. what is developable in the very short term. And, and what work, uh, the township needs to do to, to make sure that, that we're, we're in a position to encourage that development. Uh, cause I see on the map that there are some more properties that are identified with holds on them. Um, and so I'm just wondering if this is just phase one of looking at the lots overall in Maxwell, and you're planning on, on coming back with, um, you know, further, further reports on this?
So, uh, the remaining zones that still have the holding are there for a different reason, like there might be their proximity to McEwen. Uh, the nuisance that might cause, and the large one that we discussed already. And so that's basically it. Uh, this, this housekeeping zoning amendment was just for the water servicing that is available to clean up those, uh, zones, remove that holding. Uh, the other holdings, uh, will remain, because they are there for other reasons effectively.
Could, could we please get a report on those then?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yep, go ahead, Jacob.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, uh, just like, like Cash mentioned, also for the, to keep the holding zone on a larger property, like I believe, Cash, it's forty-two acres or something like that. So by keeping the holding zone on a property like that, what you're basically doing is you're, you're kind of protecting the village also, because if you remove the holding zone from a property like that, uh, not that it'll happen, or not that it could happen, or whatever, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure of who the owner is. But if the hold is removed, that means that there are nothing in, in any, in any documentation that prevent the owner from building a house on it. So basically, if the owner of that large forty-two acres property would decide to build a big house right in the middle of that forty-two acres, he could. So after that, it becomes even more complicated with the subdivision stuff, with the road allowances and everything. So by keeping the hold on it, it's like you're saying, well, we are keeping this for a subdivision. So you, you keep the holdings on until you're ready to remove it. And until you know what the lots will look like, where the roads will be, where the access will be, because right now also, as Cash mentioned, there are not even uh, uh, an access to that property. There, there is one through a road allowance, but it's still unmaintained via Vilnev Street. And it doesn't have access on the Camry Road. So by keeping the hold, you're, you're just protecting your town also. That, that is one of the, the goal of that holding provision.
Thanks, Jacob, for that explanation. Hope that helps, uh, Counselor Manley.
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Any further, uh, discussion on this issue? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion? And the motion is carried. All right, I have a motion moved by Counselor Wensink, seconded by Counselor Manley, there being no further business to discuss. The planning committee meeting was adjourned at seven oh three P M. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you, everyone, and we will move on to our, uh, regular meeting of council. Again, I would like to ever welcome every, all members of council and staff and people watching us on Facebook. Uh, welcome. So are there any declarations of cuniori interest and the general nature thereof? Not seeing any. You have, uh, the agenda. This is Madam C A O. Are there any additions to the agenda?
No, there are not, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion moved by Counselor Noble, seconded by Counselor Wensink, that the council of township in North Glengarry accept the agenda of the regular meeting of council, Monday, June eighth, twenty twenty. Any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion is carried. And we are now, uh, adoption of the previous minutes. I have a motion moved by Deputy Mayor Williams, seconded by Counselor Manley, that the minutes of the following meetings be adopted as circulated, regular meeting of council, May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty. Any discussion on the minutes? All those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you. And we're moving on to delegations. Uh, we have a delegation by Mr. Andrew Balance regarding the burn bylaw. Welcome, Mr. Balance.
Yes, thank you very much.
Go ahead.
Okay, uh, so no, I guess what I'm here for is first of all, I wanna know when the exact date was that the new burning bylaw was passed and put into place. Because by the time I found out about it, and anybody else I knew, farmers, landowners found out about it, it was already too late. It had already been passed unanimously. So I guess, first of all, when did that happen exactly? Why did that happen exactly? And how can we make changes to this going forward? Because right now, this is really affecting our business.
Okay, uh, I'm not sure, Jacob or Casia, who's, or, um, Sarah, who's taking this question?
I mean, uh, the bylaw was, uh, read, uh, on twenty-fifth of November, two thousand nineteen, uh, before council, and, uh, it was brought forward, uh, and the community and the whole prior to that, uh, where it was reviewed, and, uh, as I indicated, it was passed on the twenty-fifth of November, uh, twenty nineteen.
Okay.
Was that the twenty-fifth of November, you say? Sorry, it's cutting out.
Uh, twenty-fifth of November was when it was passed, and it was presented at a committee of the whole, uh, meeting prior to that.
Okay, and so how are we supposed to know about this as farmers and landowners before that?
Okay, the notification, uh, how, how were they notified?
So this was, uh, put out, uh, as indicated, um, we brought it forth, uh, through the revision, uh, throughout two thousand nineteen, we took various steps, uh, where we, we sat with um, various stakeholders, uh, to discuss the bylaw and the issues that we faced, uh, throughout North Glengarry. Uh, during that time, um, the stakeholders at the time, um, had various proposals where we had, um, our, our bylaw prior to that was a robust bylaw, where, where we seek uh, various improvements to improve, um, a lot of our, our complaints that we faced throughout, um, the twenty nineteen year. So we wanted to make some, some various changes and improvements to that, which is what was brought forward, uh, with some recommendations from, um, the F A O, as well as various other stakeholders, uh, involved, uh, throughout North Glengarry. And as indicated, that's, that was, that was brought forward, uh, to council at a, yeah, committee of the whole, and were council meeting on the twenty-fifth of November, uh, twenty nineteen.
And were those, uh, was this posted in the Glengarry News? Were, are you aware of that?
Um, I'm, I know, I don't have those details right at this time, but I could, uh, I could, uh, follow back, uh, on those items.
Okay, and have we had any other complaints from other farmers who are unaware of the, uh, of the burn bylaw?
No, there was, we haven't received any further, um, complaints, uh, coming in. Um, we've had quite a bit of success, uh, throughout twenty twenty, in terms of, uh, all the, the burn permits, uh, along with, um, the, uh, the new burn, uh, permit process. It's, uh, been a very positive, uh, aspect, uh, moving forward in twenty twenty.
Okay, are there any, uh, would you have something further to add, Mr. Balance?
Yeah, so when you say stakeholders, I have a bit of a problem with that, because right now, as I guess you could say a stakeholder, because being a landowner and a fourth generation farmer with my wife, this is a major part of what we do as farmers. We clean up land that was once farmland, that either got grown up or, you know, left behind, and we clean it up. We tile it, we drain it, and we make it productive farmland to put food on the table for you and me and everyone's family. And whenever I hear that, you know, it's, it's successful in that, I'm trying to figure out who it's successful for, other than the people who are basically against any type of land clearing or burning. Um, you know, this is a normal farm practice. This is what we do every year. The fall, it's not a time to be cleaning, whenever it's wet and muddy and this sort of thing. The spring, same thing, we're busy planting. So whenever, like, I think it was Matt, I had, uh, talked about, he said, well, you know, you should have had your burning done and been organized to be burning before June first. I like to think we're pretty organized, and in the sense that we didn't have time when we're planting to be burning. You know, I've got a little bit upset from that comment. And the fact that we were never even advised or asked, or, you know, we didn't know about it until it had already gone through. So like I say, we clear in the summer. We only burn whatever has been sitting for at least a year. This, the, most of the, the wood we're trying to burn right now is about five years. It's been sitting there for almost five years, so it's completely dry. It's clean, there's next to no smoke. And so when we start burning, we clear. We go in, then we hire local contractors, like Saylin Scott Drainage, to do the drainage in the summertime, when it's clean, when it's dry, we do a proper job. Because in the fall, first of all, we don't have time during the harvest, and second of all, it's, you know, it could be wet, it could be raining, it could be snows, so the job isn't done right. So not only can we not get our jobs done now, we won't be able to continue with hiring, like I said, and keeping the local economy going, because these jobs will not be done.
Well, I, I guess, I guess my question is, Mr. Balance, I mean, we've had no other complaints from farmers. We've, uh, we have a lot, we, there are other people that live in the municipality that have been, um, put out by smoke, and, you know, perhaps it's not you, but we do have an issue with it. Um, in our rural areas, and especially, um, places that are close to our hamlets. So we have had, we've had lots of issues with, uh, burning.
Yeah, and that I, I agree with. I know that some people have done this the wrong way. They've gone about it the wrong way, burning, you know, green wood, burning all kinds of stuff. They shouldn't be burning, you know, all hours of the day and night, weekends, everything. I, I understand that completely. But I guess what I have a hard time with is whenever this law has just been put into place, and like Counselor Noble was saying earlier, you know, we're in a agricultural area, we're in a rural area. So this is part of agriculture, you know, it always has been, it always will be. And when we're not allowed to burn between June first and November first, it just really slows down what we've always done, and in some ways stops what we've always done. And I guess what I'm trying to do is figure out how we can work together and make changes, make amendments to this, because for us and for myself, it's, it's not working. And so the complaints, I guess there hasn't been enough guys getting going yet, because everybody's been busy working and busy farming. Uh, the complaints will come through the summer when guys normally do their clearing. Um, I know different municipalities, you know, like South Glengarry and that, they have different rules and provisions put in place, you know, it would have to be uh, dug out the year before to let sit and dry for one year. It should have a, an excavator present when all burning is done, things like that. I'm a hundred percent okay with that, but just the fact that it was passed and we didn't know about it, that's not okay.
But, but I, I guess I just, I'm gonna question again, just, I'm looking at most of the farmers that, uh, you know, we went, I, you know, I drive around the municipality uh, quite often, I've seen burn piles being burnt all over, uh, North Glengarry. So I, I guess, I'm, I'm, I'm I'm not trying to play, I'm just trying to play devil's advocate here, that we just haven't had a lot of complaints. It looks like everybody got their burning done. And, you know, you're right, maybe we're gonna hear about it this summer, and, you know, I guess at that time, we may have to relook it, but uh, any other questions from members of council? Counselor Noble?
I just wanted to say, um, like everything else in, in life, it's usually a couple of people that ruin it for the whole crowd. So I was a huge proponent of this bylaw, because that's all I heard about last summer. Um, I would say Del Keith was smoked out four months out of five, and so I am sure it wasn't you, and then there's a couple of other people. I know it wasn't them. Um, so I have no problem in a year, you know, or a few months, a year, if we can get through this summer and nothing goes wrong, I have no problem revisiting this if Matt is up for it. Um, I just know that something had to be done, something drastic had to be done, because that's all I heard about. And it wasn't just, oh, I smell smoke. It was, I can't put my, I can't open my windows, I can't put my laundry out, I can't breathe, cause I'm asthmatic. Um, because it was, it was, it was bad. And so unless we can look at different areas for the next time, it's just, we, we had to get through this summer without having summer ruined. And, I mean, I get it, my dad loves burning his brush, so I understand. I don't know what wood chipper's cost. I don't know if that's, obviously, that's a lovely environmental choice, but, um, I get it. I have heard from a couple of farmers who, I don't say they didn't know, but they don't like, um, and I hear that all the time. So I, I sort of apologize for the ones that do it, right? But it, it was for a reason.
Oh, and I completely understand that. I know exactly who you are talking about, and I know what was going on, but I guess what I'm proposing is I'd like to show you guys how it is done properly, and how we approach things, and not to just say, like, okay, no burning whatsoever. I'd like to actually show you how we do it, when we do it, it's done right, it's clean, you know, it doesn't bother anybody, and it's just a productive way that we can keep contributing to our local economy, because we do hire a lot of local people through the year to help, you know, get the job done. And I've got guys on our team, employees on our team, they were asking, like, well, what are we gonna do? If we can't burn, well, that means we can't, you know, go on to the next phase of what we have to do, and they're right. So, that's not okay.
Counselor, uh, Deputy Mayor Williams.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, 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 I agree with Counselor Noble and, and with the mayor. I, I understand your, um, your predicament. Uh, Andrew, and, um, and it's unfortunate when municipalities are put in a position where they have to um, increase regulation in order to be able to manage some people's lack of judgment. Um, and that's, that's really what this is about. Um, I don't think we really have any choice but to maintain the status quo on this bylaw for the summer, since last year was, as Counselor Noble pointed out, just, just terrible. Um, and it doesn't mean that, you know, it doesn't mean you can't burn your, you burn your, your, your piles, just means they have to be, it has to be, you know, planned according to, according to the bylaw, and like, and, and, and as was said, you know, if we get a lot of, uh, a lot of pushback, um, this summer, I don't think we'll have any choice but to revisit it, but, uh, at, at the moment, uh, I think we do need to respect the changes we made, because they were made for important reasons.
Any further discussion? Of Counsel Wensink.
I agree as well, that we give it some time this summer and then reevaluate, and perhaps hear from others as well, if, if other farmers have the same concern.
Okay, any further discussion from members of council or questions?
And just to remind
Counselor Manley.
Um, yeah, just, I, I agree. I agree with Counselor Wensink. Um, I think we do have to give it, give it a shot or whatever. Um, yeah, Andrew, you, you mentioned that, that that, some of those piles have been there five years. Is that, is that correct?
Correct. So whenever you guys say I didn't get it done before June first, uh, there's some chunks there that will take, you know, weeks to get done, you know, I've, I've got a chunk we're working on, it's about forty acres. So it's not just gonna be done overnight, you know, it's a, it's a timely thing, but we like to, we will do it as fast as humanly possible, so that it doesn't drag on. You know, that's the key, that's the goal. But I guess, like I said, I'd invite you guys out anytime, and I can show you how we do things, and if it's bothering anybody, then I'd love to see how we could do something different, cause I, I don't wanna, you know, rock the boat anymore than you guys do. We've got neighbors here too, we've gotta try and keep happy, that I understand. But, like I said, as far as just, you know, leaving it and seeing what happens, for me, that's not a viable option. We bought this land, you know, and the premise of, you know, clearing it, putting it in production, cause like I say, this land that we don't get burnt this summer, means it doesn't get leveled, it doesn't get tiled. So that means it's not getting planted next spring, so we'll lose a whole other year. And that's the problem, people aren't understanding that aspect of what we do.
Okay, thank you. No further discussion from members of council, appears that we are going to, from the discussion from council, that we will uh, continue with the bylaw and revisit it in September. Okay, thank you, Mr. Balance, for attending. Okay, moving on to, uh, staff reports, uh, Community Services Department. Okay, moving on to, uh, staff reports, uh, community services department. Uh, I have a motion moved by councillor Wensink, seconded by deputy mayor Williams. That the council for the township of North Glengarry receives a staff report number CS twenty twenty twelve. And that council adopts the township of North Glengarry Corporate Communications Plan. Welcome in.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As council will recall, the corporate communications plan was brought to the May twentieth committee of the whole. There were some changes that were suggested at that time, that incorporated into the report. And recirculated back to council afterwards, we did not hear of any further additions or amendments to the plan. So we are now bringing it forward for council's approval.
Thank you. Are there any questions from members of council? Deputy Mayor Williams.
Uh, just a comment, uh, I would like to, uh, to compliment staff on an excellent document. Um, this was an important strategic priority for North Glengarry. Um, to ensure excellent communication both with the public and with council and internally. And I think that this is an excellent guiding document, thank you.
Perfect, thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, thank you. Uh, social media policy, I have a motion moved by deputy mayor Williams, seconded by councillor Wensink. That the council for the township of North Glengarry receives the staff report number CS twenty twenty thirteen. And that council adopts the township of North Glengarry's social media policy. Anne.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So it's logical, given that we brought forward the communications plan, that we also revisited our social media policy. To ensure that it matched up with the plan. So it's basically a housekeeping process that we're doing tonight. We made very minor changes to the social media policy to ensure that it aligned with the corporate communications plan. And we're asking council to adopt the revised social media policy.
Okay, thank you, questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion?
Just one moment.
Councillor Deputy Mayor Williams.
Um, uh, and who is the social media administrator?
So that's appointed by the C O, so it could be myself, it could also be our communications officer at the township. So it would be as needed.
Okay, so that, that individual has not been identified at this point?
Well, usually Tara handles the majority of our communications under normal circumstances. As you know, presently with the COVID situation. It's been done through the C O and through myself. So depending on the situation, we would be appointing that person accordingly.
Okay, thank you. And just one follow up, because I, I think this aligns nicely with the, the broader communications plan. I, I'm just curious, uh, in terms of, um. You know, we talked a lot about council having. Being notified of important notices that we're going out to the public so that we're aware of them and can support the message. Uh, there's no reference to that in here, um, so I'm just wondering, uh, I'm wondering about that.
So, uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor. That is referenced directly in the communications plan. And the communications plan is the guiding document, the social media policy, um, it supports the communications plan.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Flexible school boundary letter, I have a motion moved by councillor Noble, seconded by councillor Manley. That the council of the township of North Glengarry receives a staff report number CS twenty twenty fourteen. And that council supports the sending of a letter to residents located in the flexible boundary area. Informing them that the transportation is available to students in grade seven to twelve to attend either Glengarry District High School. Or Tugwa Secondary School. Anne.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you know, from two thousand sixteen onwards, North Glengarry has been a partner of the SOS Group. And we've been working together to develop rural education strategies to support our schools in North Glengarry. Um, in the spring of two thousand and twenty, the Upper Canada District, District School Board. Approved the flexible boundary area for students in, uh, as delineated in the map. And that allows students to attend either Tagway or to attend GDHS. What we want to do is, uh, the group actually wants to ensure that the residents in that boundary area are aware. That they have a choice and sending this letter would do so.
Thank you. Councillor Manley, do you have any further comment on it? Go ahead.
I just, just, uh, the fact that I know the school board itself sent out letters to, um. Uh, students that were already enrolled in Upper Canada schools. Um, but we wanted to make, make everyone aware because there may be students that are right now being transported to Cornwall. Um, that would rather be closer to home, um, and this, this gives them that option or whatever to, uh. To do that. So I think it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a win-win for, for, for us for sure. I'm, I'm so glad that that, the flexible boundary went through.
Yes, and I think it's appropriate then in the letter that we are informing parents that they. Uh, equally can go to Tugwa High School as well, so it's not.
Exactly, it's not, we're not, no, exactly, it's a choice, you have a choice to do that.
It's a choice, so I'm, I'm glad to see that in there. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, thank you. And C I P application K Mac Electric. I have a motion moved by deputy mayor Williams, seconded by councillor Noble, that council receives a staff report number CS twenty twenty fifteen. And that council approves the recommendation from the Arts, Culture and Heritage Committee for Community Improvement Plan Project. At nineteen five oh six County Road forty-three, as submitted by Ryan McMillan and Kirk McMillan. Signing authorities for K Mac Electric Limited. Program C Civic Address Grant Representing One Civic Sign Provided by the municipality. As part of its civic sign program, Program C. Commercial, commercial signage grant representing a matching grant of fifty percent up to a maximum. Of one thousand five hundred and eighteen dollars and three cents. Program E Building Permit Fee Grant Representing a Matching Grant of one hundred percent up to a maximum. Of one hundred and fifty dollars, total grants, one thousand six hundred and sixty-eight dollars and three cents. Can't wait till we go back to live meetings and you guys can.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this, uh, report was actually presented, presented to the Arts, Culture and Heritage Committee. Um, back in the first of June, uh. This is for commercial property located off of County Road forty-three. As you know, in this phase of the C I P. It, the, uh, grant, uh, actually applies to all of commercial properties. And K Mac has applied for two signs, one is a road sign and the other one is a sign on a building that is lit by goose decalating. So we are pleased to support this type of application for commercial properties.
Thank you, Anne. Any questions on this application? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Thank you, Anne, for your presentations. Moving on to the Treasury Department. Uh, bylaw twenty-four twenty twenty borrowing bylaw pumper tanker fire truck. Moved by deputy mayor Williams, seconded by councillor Noble. That the council receives a staff report number T R twenty twenty eighteen. And that bylaw number twenty-four twenty twenty being a bylaw to authorize the borrowing of funds for financing of capital. Pumper tankers, fire truck, we run a first, second and third time and adopted in open council this eighth day of June twenty twenty. Welcome, Kim.
Um, during the twenty twenty budget, council approved the, uh, purchase of a pumper tanker truck for the cost of four hundred and fifty. Um, the successful bidder came in with a tender bid of four hundred and twenty thousand plus H S T. It was to be financed by long-term debt. Um, we need to borrow four hundred and thirty thousand with the H S T rebate that we do get. Um, Infrastructure Ontario. We did not go through, we went through the Royal Bank of Canada because they could accommodate cash flow as soon as possible. So I phoned them basically. Just o- over a week ago, we can get financing as soon as tomorrow. Infrastructure Ontario takes longer and there's legal fees. So, um. On your original report, it says, um, it's a twenty-year period of amortization over two ten-year periods for interest. Interest rate was not to exceed three point three, three percent, sorry. Uh, at the time of writing the report, it was two point eight five, as of today, it's three point zero three. So it's a slight change. The bylaw indicates the three point zero three percent rate of interest. Annual loan payments instead of twenty-eight, six, one, seven is gonna be twenty-eight, six, nine, three, slightly more. But we did budget thirty-six-five, so we're well within budget for this.
Okay, thank you, questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Hey, moving on to bylaw twenty-five twenty twenty, amend fees and charges bylaw, I have a motion moved by councillor Massey, seconded by councillor Manley. That the council for the township of North Glengarry receives a staff report number T R twenty twenty nineteen. And that the council for the township of North Glengarry receives bylaw twenty-five twenty twenty. Being a bylaw to amend the user fees and charges for the township of North Glengarry. And that said bylaw be adopted and that the council instructs the clerks department to start notification process regarding the changes. Kim.
So two areas of current bylaw which needs amending, there's one in recreation, there's one under municipal civic numbering. Uh, under recreation, um, there's basi- basically an inflationary factor of one point eight percent. Uh, to accommodate the Consumer Price Index, which is the same as the current twenty twenty budget that was presented before council. In November last year. Uh, there are certain categories which are excluded, which include old blades and youth programming. And values have been rounded up to the nearest dollar, so some are lower, some are higher. So overall, it's a one point five five percent increase of the fees. Um, under the municipal civic numbering, um, this was passed by council in April of twenty twenty. Uh, and it was an application for civic numbering, excuse me, so you have to apply. Get approval, then it goes to signifo. Significant, I'm sorry. With the approved application saying that they have paid for it and then they will be given, uh, the appropriate signage will be. Um, provided. There's proposed fees that we did not have in our fees and charges before. For the civic number full kit, the, the, uh, numbers, a white cap post and things like that, they were never included in our previous fees and charges. So they need to be added, as opposed to recreation where we have just a slight increase. So. Uh, this is to provide that in, that update to our fees and charges bylaw which needs to occur.
Thank you. Questions, Deputy Mayor Williams?
How did you know that? I'm just, uh, just a couple of questions about the, uh, the civic number bylaw. I know we discussed it.
Yes.
Recently, uh, and, and Jacob, I guess this is more for you, the, um. Is, do we, do we currently have, uh, significant problems with residents, uh. Um, abiding by the civic number rules?
Uh, yes and no, uh, usually the, the, the biggest. Problem I have, it's because it's, uh, right now it's pretty much a free-for-all for civic numbers, so anyone can go at significant. Get the, the, the number, the, usually it's, uh, Karina, I think her name is, she, she's good, she would. Send me an email or something, now, now it's more like that, so the problem is less there, but. Before you would have people who, uh, well, the, the problems come in once in a while. Where you have people who have civic numbers that are not, first of all, registered. Uh, some of them have two civic numbers on the same properties and it's A B C. And we're not aware of these and that's because they went themselves to significant, get their civic number main. And they posted on the property and some of them, um. Some of them are, are bigger, some of them are, are white on green, so it, the, there are issues, it's not like it's a major issues. I mean, I don't spend my day on civic numbers, but there, there are issues, so that's why we implemented that process, it's just easier. Uh, we also have a new process to invoice people, so when they apply for a building permit. Uh, it, it will all be charged together now, so it will actually be easier for the people who apply for a new, for a new building or new, uh. Either a building or shed or a single-family dwelling. So we're just trying to, uh, I guess, make this more, uh, easier, I guess, more efficient.
Uh, thank you, yeah, um, yeah, I can, I understand the need for uniformity and, and that makes sense to me. Uh, I was just wondering if, if there's, you know, currently, you know, problems out there, uh, with regards to. Current, um, use of, because I know some people, they just put the numbers on their mailbox. Sometimes they've got a wooden sign and they just put wooden numbers on it. I mean, that, those don't, those don't qualify, uh, obviously under. The, on, under this new program, I'm just wondering if that is something, like, are, are we gonna? Is there gonna be a significant sort of educational process involved with this, uh?
It, well, m- most of the, like. Probably seventy-five percent of the time when we issue a, a civic number is for a new house, for a new building. But now with that new, uh, Emily Farm nine-one-one program, what we're gonna do is we're gonna. Post something on Facebook to say that this is available, so the, the farmers will be allowed to have a civic number. Uh, at their field entrance, so we are gonna promote that a little bit. Uh, the civic number application comes with the, the process on where to put it on your property and how it should be done. So, uh, yeah, there's gonna be a bit of a, I guess, promotion on that side, but, uh. I, I also, I, uh, someone from, um. I don't remember the exact name, I think it's the Junior Farmers of Stormont and Glengarry, something like that. They got in touch with me and they want to help the, the farmers with the process and with the installation of the civic number, so. I, I'm assuming that we're gonna get a bit, like some applications that way, but, uh, yeah.
I, I, just to finish up, I, I, I know what you're saying, I was, I guess I was just referring to existing. Uh, civic numbers, because I see a, a lot of, um. A lot of issues with those and, and, and I guess, I, I, I just, I'm looking at the process and just what. Hoping it can be as simple as possible for people to, to engage in and not be too complicated so that they're not. Discouraged from, from putting a proper civic number up.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm, uh, you like, you, I, I don't. I don't necessarily patrol them, but when I do see an issue, I do stop at the property and. Like I, I explained to the, to the people how it should be done and. Most of the time, it's a very smooth process and they do apply and they do get the, the nice one. I, I would say right now. Like, some problems also come from when S D G sends me something like Sabina at the counties. Uh, they have like with the roll numbers, they don't match with the civic numbers, so there's a lot of that also, but, uh, when I see one, yeah, I, I try to stop and. And discuss with the, yeah, absolutely, yeah, Todd, Todd is also aware of that, so he, the, the, he, he does that too, for sure, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councillor Winston?
But thanks, Jacob. I'm glad to hear that you're addressing when someone doesn't have a proper civic. Numbers or the proper signage because it is a safety concern. Making sure that emergency vehicles can find the property if ever there's an issue. So I'm glad you're addressing it as you're seeing it.
Councillor Massey? You're not, you're muted. I kinda like it, but.
Just a question to Jacob there, uh, at the feed mill in town, is this thing to the urban areas also, or is that the?
Yeah, yeah, it does include all the properties in North Glengarry. But, uh, when your building is less than fifty meters from your front property line, you're allowed to only post a number on the building. As compared to at the, at the row, you don't need the actual post and sign in town.
Okay, because I would have, yeah, okay, that's, I'll maybe I'll contact you because I do have the. Way back when the store was on Massey Crescent and now it's kinda, since about twenty-five years, it's on Jacques Street. But we need a change of address also if we're gonna do.
Yeah, there, there's lots like that, especially for some reason now, it's, and you're like Tobin and Front Street also, they change from one to another and boom, boom, you don't know where you are, but yeah.
Okay, perfect.
So, uh, councillor Massey, are you advocating that we switch the name of Jacques Street? Perhaps Jamie Street, no?
No, they'll come, Jamie, don't worry.
Councillor Noble, did you have a question?
I'm just curious, um, are, are they mandatory? I mean, my neighbor's house has been there for fifty years and when the new person moved in. They had to go buy one. And then I know that there's a, there's a civic. Sign on the S curve as you come into Alexander that got wiped out by, uh, I think it was just a car accident and. And I don't, they've replaced it, so, I mean, I know I'm going into this whole thing with. With the fire chief and with the nine-one-one and the people I've been calling to try to. Make sure a number of ambulances go up and down the road, missing the houses out here, and I'm obviously in favor of all these civic numbers, but. Can people get fined for not having one?
Uh, yes, you could, but as you know, I'm not the hardest person on fines, so I prefer. Come and get a civic number, but technically, yeah, you could, and it's, it's, it's clear in the bylaw that it's. Solely the owner's responsibility to replace its civic number, so if it gets pulled out by whatever, snow or whatever, it's, it's their. It's the owner's responsibility, yes, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on, uh, no further questions. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on. Uh, no further questions. All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kim. Uh, planning and building bylaw enforcement, clear cutting bylaw, I have a motion moved by Counselor Noble, seconded by Counselor Massey. That the Council of the Township of North Glengarry approved the clear-cutting bylaw, public consultation process. Proposed within staff report number BP twenty twenty eighteen. So I just caution everybody that this is a, uh, report about the public consultation process, not the actual bylaw. But, Cassia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so yes, this is a process for the clear-cutting bylaw and how we can move it forward. So, uh, when the pandemic COVID happened, we were at the stage of analyzing the content of the bylaw with council. And then we were going to hold a stakeholder meeting with, uh, agencies such as the Conservation Authority. Farmer representative and such. Unfortunately, this was sold due to COVID. Uh, so the way to move forward would be to. Hold online stakeholder consultation meeting for both the municipal, public consultation and the stakeholder meeting. So in the staff report, I outlined four steps to move forward. The first would be, uh, once the. Agreed, the version of the bylaw is ready, it will be circulated, released to the pile, uh, public through the township website, Facebook and Glengarry News. Uh, and approximate number two, approximately after three weeks after circulation to the public, staff will organize an online stakeholder engagement meeting. With the participation of commenting agencies, so as I've mentioned, Conservation Authority, Ontario Federation of Agriculture and so on. Uh, I will do my best to make the meeting as engaging as possible. So there is different tools, uh, that could be used during an online conference to gather comments. And, and then efficient and detailed matter. Uh, I will also have some kind of survey that will be sent to participants to gather more comments. Uh, after these comments are received, uh, the staff will. Uh, analyze the comments and see if anything should be changed, of course, with the consultation of council as well. Number three, so after the stakeholder meeting, changes would be made to the bylaw as agreed. And council will agree upon to these changes during a committee of the whole meeting. So again, after a stakeholder meeting, a com, committee of the whole. Um, meeting would take place for the clear-cutting bylaw and then. Number four, the final version, version of the bylaw will be presented at the following regular meeting. For adoption and public consultations, so, uh, the bylaw, the final version would be circulated on the website. Uh, Facebook and Glengarry News. For final comments and the public will be invited to speak as a participant during the municipal public consultation and provide their comments. So this is it. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I think this looks like an excellent plan, uh, to me, Kasha. Uh, the, the one thing I would like to see. Is, um, an opportunity, uh, for people to comment in writing. Um, not everybody's going to be able to do the email and online thing, so some, some people will, will want to be able to write in. So if we could advertise, uh, an address, I think that would be good.
Absolutely. I will encourage people to say, send comments straight to my email address.
Thank you. But no, not just email, in, in writing, like, uh, to. Yeah. My letter.
Okay.
Any further questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Thank you. Okay, moving on to, uh, consent agenda. I have a motion moved by Counselor Massey, seconded by Counselor Wensing, that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry receives the items from the consent agenda. For information purposes only. Are there any questions on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion is carried. New business, no new business, notice a motion, next regular public meeting of council is Monday, June twenty-second at seven P M via Zoom. And, uh, we have a closed session, so, uh, we'll, uh, we will leave this platform and come back again on Zoom with just members of council. So I'd like to thank everybody, uh, for, on Facebook for attending and the public and have a great evening. Thank you.
Night, everyone. Good night.
Good night, everyone. Good night.